All right, well, we've been joined by our policy committees. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Ema, please call the rule.
Ema, Lance Elhaj and Cindy Mitchell are excused.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of September 17th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion, changes to the minutes? Any none? All those in favor? Upstanding. That's unanimous. Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
We have none.
This is the portion of the meeting in which folks in the audience who would like to address the board have an opportunity to do so. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board this evening? So that leads me to my update. So I want to give a quick update. Tonight was supposed to be our retreat. You should have all gotten an email that in order to get ourselves organized and provide a substantive retreat, Rick and I met and decided to ask some guest speakers to come, so therefore we had to postpone it because we couldn't get the people we wanted to come tonight. So we're now having it November 19th and 20th. You know that will be disappointing to some of you who said you wanted to make sure you could participate before your terms expired. However, you're welcome as a member of the public to participate on the 19th or the 20th. So we have Dr. Steve Pounds joining us. He works for Chimboro in workforce development. Colleen Quint, who is the interim chair of Educate Maine, works for the Alpon Scholarship Program. And Karen Cole for Collins Center for the Arts. And that should take care of our three sort of goals we articulated around leadership, marketing, and succession planning. So they'll be speaking with us the first evening, and then the second evening we will be working together, reworking our goal setting. So that's the plan. Are there any questions about the board retreat? The other thing I had was an update. We did have Maine School Management had a candidates evening. And so I have this with me. So this is the handout that was given to all candidates. Running, we did not have any candidates from our region, but we had great board representation. So we sat with people from Bangor and worked with those other towns on what those would be. So I'll just pass this around if folks are interested in that. And the other thing is I received an invitation for the Bangor Savings Bank Fall Open House Celebration. Leave that there. At least one of our bankers.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
We do a lot of business management.
And unfortunately for me, it's Thursday night, October 23rd, which is the same day as the MSMA Conference. But if someone here would like to represent us at that.
I'll be there.
You're going to be at this?
Oh, yes.
So do you need the?
I got that in there too.
Maybe all of us.
We do.
Oh, good. Oh, good. So it would be great, I think, if somebody could go.
Yeah.
All right. There is that. I also wanted to just take a moment. I know there are some folks in the audience who are candidates to join this board, and I didn't know if you'd like to just stand up and let us know, just say your name so we can put some faces maybe to potential candidates.
My name is Jason Sharp, right here in Hampden, live up on Deer Hill Lane, and proud alumni of Hampden Academy.
When can you graduate, Jason?
1991.
Tony Libertori, stopped in a couple of times. I live over on Liberty and just moved here about a year and a half ago.
And I'm Les French. I live in Hampden up on Westbrook Terrace. And my wife is an alumni of Hampden Academy, class of '86.
Well, we thank you all for your interest in joining the board and for being willing to do public service. It's not an easy job. So if we can answer any questions for you, we'd be happy to do that. Additionally, last year we offered this to folks who are candidates. If you have any interest in going to the Maine School Management Conference, it happens before the election, please contact the superintendent. We can see about your attendance there.
The dates are October 23 and 24, which is a Thursday, Friday. You can attend either day or both days. If you were going to select either day, I'd recommend Thursday. So let me know if you're interested, October 23, 24. Just shoot me an email or give me a call at the office.
It's a really nice, a lot of workshops about boardsmanship, about current issues in school law, all kinds of things that folks can access there. So that's what I have.
Okay, under personnel, we have no resignations to report tonight, and we have no nominations. So move the superintendent's report and reading essential behaviors. Now comes, this is Amanda.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Amanda. Principal's report. I've asked Mrs. Moore to give a brief update on some of the happenings at Smith School. So Dawn, if you would, please.
Kim Raymond is here with me. She's the school counselor in Winnipeg. So we're going to show two different things today about Smith School, and Kim's going to help me by running this slide. She'll first jump in. I will pass these around for you. You can just pass those around while waiting. We're going to talk about two things today. Is that showing?
Yep.
No, actually. Okay. I'll stand right. So the first thing I want to talk about is I just want to share, last year we voted in to the school budget two ed techs for reading, and I just want to show you the impact. I know we've only been in school for a month, but it is amazing what two ed techs can do for, first of all, the morale at the schools. Our reading teachers are feeling so positive about being able to reach the needs of all students. And I can't even explain to you the different feel it feels when you know that you have the ability to reach all students rather than have to choose who you're going to serve. So I put together, last year I shared with you the data of what it looked like in our school, and that's in the black. And what I've done is I compared this here in the red. So you can see, the numbers obviously change because the number of students in each grade change as they move on. And, you know, the only variable is the data that's in the black was around February data. And so we're looking at the beginning of the year data, which sometimes can change depending on student needs. But if you, the main part I want to point out is that the number of students not receiving services, if you look right across, you see all those zeros. And that means we're hitting all the students right now that are below benchmark, and that's amazing. I mean, that's just something we've never been able to do. So again, like I said, it's lifted the morale, which morale is a big part of success. And I think the teachers are so excited, the staff is so excited to just be able to reach those children. So I'm looking forward to perhaps later on in the year, sharing with you some of the results of the success of having these extra ed techs. So I just want to thank you for putting that into the budget, because I think it's going to make a huge difference in our school, and I already see it within a month. So thank you very much for that. The second thing I want to share about Smith Schools, I've got to pull up my slideshow.
Dawn, just remind us, that was two ed techs, right?
Yes, it was two ed techs, correct. Is that only showing half of it?
Two-thirds, maybe. Okay.
Okay. So I'll, by the way, excuse me. I'll start with a quote, "If you never change your mind, why have one?" So I'm a true believer in that, and we believe that at Smith School. So we teach, at Smith School, we teach what's called the habits of mind. And habits of mind are intelligent behaviors, and there's 16 attributes, what humans do when they behave intelligently. And characteristics of intelligent people, of what intelligent people do when confronted with problems, the resolution to which are not immediately apparent, and seldom performed in isolation. Rather, clusters of behaviors are drawn forth and employed various ways. It's an incomplete list of intelligent behaviors, behaviors drawn from research on human effectiveness, descriptions of remarkable performers, and analysis of characteristics of effective people. The behaviors transcend all subject matters commonly taught in school. These are the 16 habits of mind that we will be working on, and I'll just let you take a quick look at that. I won't read them to you. All right. So at Smith School, what we're doing is each Wednesday afternoon, the entire school comes to the gymnasium, and I relieve teachers. They get to go do some planning time, because we all know elementary planning time is very limited. And ed tech stay-in, any specialists that are around stay in the gym with me. And Kim and I tag team, and what we do is we teach about the habits of mind. This, last year, we were able to teach listening and understanding with empathy, persisting, thinking about thinking, thinking flexibly, and managing impulsivity. So here are a few samples of what we've done with the habits of mind. So we talked a lot about persisting, sticking to it, trying different strategies, finding different ways to reach your goals, remaining focused. And so what we do is we do activities with the kids that show persisting. And it's a funny story. I'll share this first, and then I'll tell a funny story about it. So this is one of the activities I do with the students. We slowly read this, and we practice it. We do other activities. We come back to it and come back to it. And then by the end of the 45 minutes, they learn that just by practicing and sticking to it, they're able to do it much better than they were at the beginning. And so we play with, we play with different things like that. The first day that we did persisting, after the next day, I was in my office, and a little boy came down and wanted to read me a story he had read. So he comes in, he reads me the story, very proud of himself, and he's walking out of the office, and he says something to the secretary. And I said, you know, Debbie, what did he say? And she goes, "I think he said he was persisting." And she had no idea that we had done persisting. And this is a second grader, and I thought, that's why he came to me, because he had persisted, and now he could read the book. So it was really fun to see that happen, and they, you hear the kids talking about it in the school, how they persist, and they persist, and they persist. So it's really carried over. So another one we've worked on, which obviously you know fits with five, six, seven, eight-year-olds, managing impulsivity, and to take them their time, and to think before acting, and choose their response. And again, it's really fun to do this with kids, because you can play all kinds of games that make them have to think about what they're doing. So the next slide, and I won't make you all do this.
Thank you.
We do the freeze dance, which is really fun, because we go crazy with our bodies. And as soon as I say freeze, they need to freeze. So they need to control their impulses and manage their bodies, which is really hard for five-year-olds to do. So it's fun. Or we play Simon Says, and they have to listen, because they always want to do what is said, but they have to listen for Simon to say it. So we play a lot of fun games that teach them that as well.
We play a song where they don't, where they are supposed to stand still and not dance to it. We did that once too, and that's hard for them, because they have to think about what they're supposed to be doing instead of dancing to music, which is what we all want to do.
So thinking flexibly, actually, that's one of my favorite ones, because I often think differently than other people. So this fits very well. It's to look at things another way. Kids really need to learn that. It's, you know, one tunnel thought. So we work at looking at things different ways, being open-minded, coming to problems from a different angle, and listening to opinions, and then it's okay to change your mind. So these are two examples that we show the kids, and we ask them, you know, to look at the first one and ask what they see. And it's really amazing, because when we did this, half of the children saw one thing, and the other half saw the, it was about a 50-50 split in what they saw. So who wants to share what they see? Does anyone see anything in this first picture right here? Do you see?
A lady with a feather in her hair hat.
A lady with a feather in her hat.
And with a choker.
Does anyone see something different?
Yeah, an old woman.
With a nose.
An old lady with a nose and a mouth and a feather. Or you can see the young lady with the nose, the hair, and the feather. And this one, I think you've probably all seen. That's one of the easier ones, where you can either see a face, or you can see the two faces on the side.
Well, in that one, you can actually see both, as opposed to that one, you really have to see.
You have to think about it, yep. So it's really fun to teach kids that they have to look at things differently and think about the way, the way you see things. There's a lot of fun ones, like.
Looks like it's new ones out when we review that this year.
You have two blacks on that. You don't see the faces.
And this is another activity we do. If some people still want to work, I'm wearing the same face.
No, he's too black. He can't see the faces.
This is another thing we do, flexible thinking. We give them a scenario, and then we ask for three possible reasons why, because there's lots of different reasons that things happen, and that's what we're trying to teach kids. Listening with empathy and understanding. I'm going to let Kim share a little bit about that one, because she does a lot with her guidance classes, and we'll.
This is something for adults.
This is it? It's good for all ages, yes. So it started me on, so they can get these skills. So I watch a lot of the kids on the listening, understanding, empathy and understanding, understanding others. And we would talk a lot about understanding someone else's point of view. And the kids notice, like putting myself in someone else's shoes, which we all know is an important skill, but really hard, especially for five-year-olds, six-year-olds, but even for some adults, I guess. But we, and that's something I also cover in guidance classes as well. So I do guidance classes regularly with all the grades, and I talk about recognizing feelings, and it directly ties into a lot of our habits of mind that we do. And I talk about, you know, managing your own feelings, as well as what you can do if you notice that someone else isn't feeling, you know, feeling good, and what you can do when you recognize the negative feelings or a positive feeling. So it's been carrying over a lot in guidance classes as well. The other, other thing, other habit of mind, we even talked, we talked for them about, is thinking about your thinking, and metacognition, which as you can imagine.
You don't say, use the word metacognition.
I do, actually, because we want them to understand the big word. And it's funny, because using the big word metacognition, the kids, it draws their attention. What does that word mean? And the kids were flowing away with it at first. So I said, metacognition might seem like a big word, but, you know, metacognition is all about thinking about your, you know, your thought process, being aware of your thoughts and actions, and, you know, making, like reflecting on what's working, and really thinking about what you're doing, and how you go through things. And, you know, your awareness, like how did yourself this problem, like it starts at the bottom, like just thinking critically about your whole thought process. And these are some of the things that we, I talked with the kids about when I was teaching them about metacognition. You know, these are some of the things that you might say, like, "I'm thinking, I'm wondering, you know, I'm imagining. It reminds me of, you know, things, I'm figuring out." These are the types of things I would say with the kids, and get them thinking about kind of phrases that show that they're kind of using that deeper thinking. And now this is how I got them to remember what metacognition means. So we did this little chance, little chant, and I had some motions that go along with it, right? I think I can think about thinking. Like, do you understand what I said? It's all about metacognition. It's what's going on in my head. And the kids did this, and we repeated it a couple of times. And then by the end of our assembly, we came back to it, and they, we did it a couple of times, and they remembered it. And then I found myself later on in guidance classes, they would say, "Hey, I remember what metacognition means." And just knowing that it's what's going on in my head was enough to kind of cue them into what metacognition is all about. And they were, I said, "Go home and tell your parents that you learned about metacognition today." And teach them what it means. But the really great thing about the habits of mind, the one thing that I've noticed too, that I've been seeing, is that it really is carrying over. As we go into classes, I taught, some of the first guidance classes I taught this year, the first couple of weeks of school, one of the classes, I was reading a book, and it had to do with staying on task. And one of the kids raised their hand and said, "Mrs. Raymond, you have to, you know, manage impulsivity to stay on task." And I said, "Yes, you do. That's one of our habits of mind." And then I was teaching another class, and they said, and they said, "Oh, well, you have to have empathy." So they're carrying it over and remembering from last year. So it shows that it's, that it's really sticking with them, and we hope that as we teach, introduce more of them, that we can kind of build on that. So our main purpose is that, you know, nothing's stopping you from becoming the most successful person you can be. And we believe that at Smith School, and we think the habits of mind will help our students to also be successful. So that is our goal with habits of mind. So thank you very much for letting us share and talk a little bit about our, about Smith School. We're very excited for having a great start to our year.
I have a portion.
Sure.
Do you have plans to share this with the next grade, the next school they're going to, and follow up and see what results?
Well, the habits of mind are actually part of our, part of Educate, what we're starting to use for our reporting system to parents. So eventually, we're going to start using those habits of mind to report to parents of how kids are doing on these skills, because they're skills that everybody's starting to teach.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last year, you, number one, you gave a presentation about kind of the behavioral challenges that you were facing that were somewhat new to this school. Have you noticed a decline in any of those since you've been implementing this?
I have noticed that we're all using the same language when we're having conversations, which I think is very helpful. So kids understand when we say managing impulsivity. So we're all using the same language, rather than, you know, you need to stop, or you need to behave. We're using the same language, which I think is going to be very beneficial in a few years. And the older, some of the older students are using this language with younger students too, which is really neat. Like, you see, your kids talking on the playground, and they might use the words like empathy, or you need to show empathy, or, you know, you kept persisting when you were trying to climb the monkey bars. Or, I mean, they're using those words, so it's really nice to see. And they connect them to books. It's really interesting, because there's a lot of books that show a lot of these traits, and the kids can pick them out, and they can tell you what's in that book. So it's been really fun. So thank you very much for letting us.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Kim. Okay, item C, just a reminder, as we mentioned earlier, we do have our conference coming up. So again, if you have not contacted Gloria and you'd like to go, please do so. I know you'd enjoy that. And our student rep, about let her come with us tonight. So Brian, want to give us an overview?
Well, we're about halfway through the first quarter. Quarter ends on Halloween, actually, so lots of tests coming up, end of the first units. Sports are well underway. I think most of our teams are doing pretty well. All the extracurriculars are up and running, as far as I know. Today, we actually had our first math meet and MCI, I think. So that went well. Things are running smoothly.
Okay. Any questions from Ryan? Okay, Ema?
The only thing I'd like to add on my board update is the Reeves Brook Trail's being opening. That is not a dedication ceremony opening up. It's more affiliated with the Ed Foundation and a fundraising effort and having a run. So not to confuse that with a dedication ceremony. I thought that Peter was in today. The dedication ceremony will be probably either next spring or next fall, and will be, we will have a large part of, be part of that dedication ceremony. So I just want to clarify that. And then Inya Packet, they're having a trail work day on the Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There's still one trail that needs to be blazed, trail blazed, and that, that'll be probably done next summer. So there's, we're in the works of finishing up the trail. So kudos to them.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly.
All right. Are there questions of board members at this time? Move to committee reports, and I believe the first one is Ed Committee.
We had a meeting prior to this one. We had an excellent overview by two teachers and a student, Tristan Gardner, about various components of technology in high school, particularly the iPad, and how it's being used by both teachers and students. And Tristan did a great job at highlighting, must have been eight or 10 different software programs that he uses. It was really something. And just to sort of see how it's evolved, and, you know, what a powerful, what a powerful tool it is in the students' hands. We followed up with a bit of a conversation on the ideas on how we can better support K through eight administrators with the eye observation. We talked about the K through five foreign language initiative, and trying to get that off the ground in the pilot project that Kelly O'Brien has started, and has already done a presentation, a couple of presentations on that, and that Mary is visiting a school district in Maine that already has an existing K through five foreign language program going, sort of doing a little best practices in the state survey. And then a reminder again to everyone about the community forums being held. I believe if I have the right dates, it's the 21st and the 28th.
Correct.
And the focus again primarily is the length and the school day concept, and.
And Stan's base education. The 21st is at Reeves Brook, 7:00. 28 is at Wagler, 7:00. Are you invited to come?
Are we going to get some kind of a formal email?
Yes, yeah. Yes, you are.
Any questions for the Ed Committee? Policy Committee, Amy?
So we met today, and we really focused on, we focused on two policies and regulations. One is the video surveillance on school property, school buses, which we had brought before you before, and will bring before you for second reading at the next meeting, not today. We also talked about tobacco, drug, and alcohol use, both the regulations and the policy. And we're going to revisit that. The policy committee is going to revisit that at our next meeting. So you won't see that until a few more meetings down the road. And then later on today, I'll present some policies for second reading.
Great. Any questions for our policy committee? And John, do you want to give an update about UTC?
I thought I gave an update.
You did the last time, but this is actually the place where it should fall, so I thought maybe we could revisit it. And some folks weren't here.
Well, let's say briefly, enrollment is up quite noticeably at UTC, at least in part because of the adoption of the regia program. And things are going swimmingly there.
And you have a meeting tomorrow evening.
That's also true.
Thank you. And did I miss any committee reports?
You're all set.
We should give a brief sort of heads up to those of us on the negotiations committee that that work will be commencing sometime soon.
I would say probably the beginning of December might be a reasonable commencement date. Beginning of December.
All right. So that brings us to policy consideration, and we have the exhibits.
Yeah, so the exhibits are all presented to you, excuse me, for second reading. And if there were any changes, they were only minimal and based on what we talked about after first reading. So I guess the first one is CGC, which is our SUE 22 Adult and Community Education Program. Don't think there were any changes made from first reading to second reading. So move we accept for second reading.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions for Amy or John?
Yeah, first, I want to preface my comments by saying, I really appreciate what you guys are doing, and I think you're doing a fabulous job. But I have a point of clarification. And it's taken me a while to understand this completely, because I'm sometimes slow.
You're making me nervous. Go ahead.
Well, please don't be nervous in a tiny degree. But in fact, when we, when we move on to second reading, we are also adopting that policy.
Correct.
And I recommend in the future that we say, not just second reading, but second reading and adoption. Because then, not only would I understand it better, but so would the world at large.
That's perfect. Would you like to amend the original motion?
Well, no, I'm suggesting this for the future, not for this evening.
Great. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. We accept policy CGC, Adult and Community Education Programs. Is there any other comment? All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. The next one is Policy EI Insurance Program and Risk Management. Let's do a motion and a second, and then we'll do, have Amy give us the update.
Move we adopt the policy. Second?
Okay, seconded. Okay. Want to give an update, Amy?
Again, this was, there's no changes to that, to this from our first reading. It's pretty straightforward.
Any questions for the policy committee on this one? All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next is Discuss and Act on Second Reading of Policy EBAA Chemical Hazards. The motion?
I move we adopt Policy EBAA.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Amy, do you want to give us a second?
Same thing. This is, no changes from first reading.
Any questions? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Discuss and Act on Second Reading of Policy DM Cash in School Buildings.
I move we adopt Policy DM.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Amy?
No changes from our first, first reading. There was discussion at our first reading, but I think it was clarified. So this is for second reading and adoption.
Great. Any questions on chemical hazards?
No, cash.
Oh, sorry, cash in school buildings. All right, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And Policy JIC, Tobacco, Drug, and Alcohol Use by Students.
Yeah, we're going to table that, but I'd like to table it. We're still working on it.
Okay, so you make an emotion to table it?
Thank you.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor of tabling? And that's unanimous. So you bring that back to us in a few weeks.
Yes.
Okay. And Environmental and Safety Program, Policy EB.
I move we adopt Policy EB.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Amy?
Same, this is the same as first reading.
Any questions in the group? All right, and all those in favor? And that's also unanimous. And are we tabling EEA EFA Video Surveillance on School Property and School Buses?
I would move to table it.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved to, moved and seconded to table this one? Any discussions? All those in favor? Oh, John?
I'm assuming you're tabling it, because you're still working on it.
We're still working on it, exactly. It will be better next time.
All those in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, Discuss an Act on Second Reading for Elimination of Policy ED Business Management Goals and Objectives.
I move we eliminate Policy ED.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do you want to give us an update?
There's no update. We, this was, this is just covered in other policies that we have. It's not necessary.
Any questions? All those in favor? Not unanimous. And also, we have Elimination of Policy GBAE Hazard Communication Program. Is there a motion?
I move we eliminate Policy GBAE.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
And same thing, this is covered in other policies and federal laws and state laws.
Great. Any questions for the Policy Committee on that elimination? All those in favor? Not unanimous, thank you. Looks like we have no old business. New business? Discuss an Act on Voting Delegate to the MSMA Conference.
The voting delegate this year is on Thursday at 2:00. Maybe the people who have been a voting delegate can maybe just comment on that responsibility. Martha, you've done that a number of times. John, you've done that. You want to add, Martha?
Well, it's just that they have.
Resolutions.
Resolutions that, that they have to vote on with a voting delegate from all the members, so it's sometimes interesting. Is that a fair statement, Kelly? Is it a fair statement?
It's sort of public policy statement.
It's frequently interesting, it's occasionally controversial. And just as in, just as with our meetings, most motions are really very straightforward and not the least bit controversial, and it's, the, the ones that really are interesting are the ones where there's a lot of discussion, and there's disagreement.
And we'll have those resolutions at our next board meeting, so we can review and give the delegate voter some direction.
I am hoping that I will not be the voting delegate this year, because I am the voting delegate for UTC.
Okay.
Who's going?
I'm going, but I will be presiding over that meeting. John is going to be there for UTC, so that leaves you, Martha, and Eric.
And Amanda.
And Amanda. So, do you want to have a throwback? Would you like to decide?
Go for it.
Celebrity cage match, just to see.
In Augusta.
In Augusta, at the vote, at the Civic Center, 2:00 on Thursday.
I'm leaving the board in a month, but if nobody else wants to join in, I'd be happy to.
Eric?
Eric will do it.
Okay. All right. Hey, Eric. Thank you, sir.
And anyone who wants to be part of that meeting can certainly come in and observe what goes on.
And we can name an alternate, too, in case.
Yep.
Yes, we can. Matter of fact, that's a good point, we should do that, just in case Eric is, or something.
So we'll have Amanda can be our.
Amanda?
Are doing the formal motion?
No.
Or we just can volunteer? Okay, so Eric and Amanda's on deck.
I'll do the.
If Eric becomes ill.
Eric?
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much for that. All right, communication correspondence, set meeting dates. Who needs a meeting?
Policy.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
We'd like to look at next week.
So we're suggesting October 8?
October 8.
So October 8, that, 6 o'clock?
6 is fine.
Okay.
Okay, October 8, and we have our Standing Education Committee at 5:30 on the 15, or 6 o'clock, depending on the composition of you get this.